Are you guys ready to get started? We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First, I want to thank everyone for coming to the meeting today. I definitely want to thank city staff for their excellent work this week. Their experience, diligence, and aptitude served the City of Lawrence well this week. And I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners as well. We've all navigated a very bumpy week. So tonight, we have three items on the agenda. The first one is to receive the resignation of Mayor Jeremy Farmer from the Lawrence City Did you have anything that you wanted to say about that first?
Vice Mayor, you've received the resignation, and so it would be appropriate to have our motion, I think, to receive it. And you may want to make some comments, too, on how you might handle public comment this afternoon.
Okay. Yeah, we were planning to have public comment after all three items tonight. Okay. Well, is there a motion to receive the resignation?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Wait, I didn't say nay, sorry. Sorry, I'm a little nervous about this. I apologize. I say aye. All right, so the next one is to take formal action regarding the resignation.
Vice Mayor, I would suggest, in light of the number of people that have come today, I would suggest that we take public comment at this time on anyone who wishes to address the commission at this time about the matter that is before us. So that would be my suggestion, and then we take the commission comments after that.
So does anyone have any public comment on this item?
Since no one else... Rob Sands, I live in West Lawrence. I don't envy the commission's decision that they have to make in the coming days. I just wanted to give a slight recommendation, however. We want an inclusive decision without bogging down your agenda for the decisions you have to make for the city. Obviously, another election is not allowed, as has been stated in the paper and I think in the chambers. The commission's responsibility is to select, so ultimately, I'm not saying anything you don't already know, the responsibility lies with you. In order to do this and to maximize community involvement, respect for the decisions of the voters, I would recommend that the city commission looks into adopting an ad hoc committee to determine the method of selection, not the actual names, just the method that will be used. Do you go to voter rolls? Do you go to a...some sort of points-based system with experience, however that may be? I just recommend that the...because to drag this out any further with public comment that goes beyond today, it's going to bog down your business of making decisions for the city. Give the committee 10 to 14 days to develop the method, again, the method of selection, and then ultimately, the commission would have the authority to either accept the method or deny the method, go back to the drawing board, or just out and out make a decision. So, just wanted to give that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. The public comment is for the formal action regarding the resignation. Our third item is going to be about receiving information on filling the vacancy and filling the position of mayor. So if anyone else has recommendations on how we fill the position, let's keep that until after we do the third item. But we're on the second item right now. Is there any other public comment regarding formal action regarding the resignation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sodden. I think that is a great idea and saves a lot of confusion. I just have a question. It wasn't clear if you voted yea or nay?
I voted yea. It was my mistake.
Thank you.
A little nervous. It's been a very bumpy week. Any other public comment? All right, so back to the commission.
Vice Mayor, if I could have the floor just for a second. You know, you're absolutely right. It has been a bumpy week for all people in Lawrence, Kansas. This is a pretty tough time. History will have a lot to say about this past week in Lawrence and the effect that it has had. But one of the things that we must do as a commission and as a community is we need to thank Mayor Farmer for the job that he's done. He's served his community, and for that, we should all be appreciative. But now it's time to move on, and we must move on. We must put this behind us, and as was suggested, we're going to be filling a vacancy. But at this moment here, it's time to heal a community. It's time that we come together as a commission, and we work together to go into the remainder of this term. There are a lot of big items that we have and a lot of people that are depending on us to make decisions on their behalf, and we must do that. We've got not only folks to represent in this community, we've got a staff that is busy working for us every minute of the day. When I see, as you got this morning, emails from the interim city manager that she starts receiving at 3:53 in the morning, and she's sending things out to me, I'm realizing these people don't ever go to sleep. And so, the thing is, we have a responsibility to make sure that we act as leaders and we move ahead in this process. And I know that every member of this commission is wanting to do that and do the very best that we can for the members of this community. You know, this is a pretty tough job I've decided in the last week. And, you know, owning a little barbershop on Massachusetts Street in the glass window is...there's been a lot of public comment, and I want you to know... (laughter) I want you to know how much I appreciate everybody's comments because I think that it's been very helpful for me to hear from folks and really hear their feelings about the matter because it is a tough time. But I guarantee one thing, we will come through this, and we'll come through big time. We will take care of the matters at hand. We've got a city manager to hire. We've got a seat to fill. Those are big items in itself, and we will get this done. So, thanks to the former mayor, and thank you for the time, and thank everyone for the comments that they provided to me. I promise I will get responded to a lot of the emails I got, but boy, there is a lot. So, anyway, thank you all very much.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to say a few words as well. You know, echo many of the same things that Commissioner Amick has just said. You know, the last 72 hours have been very unfortunate for this community in a lot of ways. A lot of things have happened in a way that they shouldn't have happened, and, you know, what's happening today with the resignation is the right thing. Where we go from here is something we have a lot of control over. You know, what this demonstrated to me was the vulnerability that we all face. I mean, we had a lot of issues in front of us, and then all of a sudden, the train derailed, and everything kind of became Plan B to dealing with this situation. And I think the reason we call a special meeting today instead of waiting until next Tuesday is to make it very clear, we do not intend for this to get in the way of normal business of the city. We had no interest in dealing with this at a Tuesday night meeting because Tuesday night meetings are for one purpose. They're for making Lawrence a better place, they're for fixing the problems that our community faces. And while this is a problem that our community faces, we're dealing with it now, and we're getting it out of the way so that regular business can continue. Along those lines, there's been a lot of discussion in the paper about a timeframe for what this process should be, and a lot of people have a lot of different ideas about, you know, how quickly or how long this should drag out. When I talked to Commissioner Amick last Tuesday, you know, here's a man with a ton of experience. He's been here before, he's lived through this before, the rest of us simply have not. And what we had discussed was the idea of we cannot rush into this decision. If we presented you a name today and said, "Here it is, here's the person filling the seat," that would be the absolute wrong way to handle this. This is not a choice that needs to be taken lightly, and we have nearly two years, actually, with the extension of the election, you have more than two years left on that seat. This is not something that has to happen before Tuesday, and if I have anything to say about it, it won't be. This is something that we're going to take some time with, that we're going to make sure the public is part of. When I ran for election, as did Leslie and Stuart, we talked a lot about restoring trust in the community. We've taken a pretty giant step backwards. We're 100 days in, and I feel like we're farther back than when we started. But we have two years left, and it's going to be a very real priority for me to make sure that that gets rebuilt. I don't know how long I'm going to be up here. It may only be two years, but when I leave, I want trust to have been restored, and we have to do this right.
Thank you.
As we accept his resignation, we thank Jeremy for his service to our community. I'd also like to thank the staff for their work in the last week, and I mean all of the city staff. We have great people who are doing their jobs day in, day out, and that's what keeps this city moving. We will also be working to make sure that your commission gets things done.
Well, I definitely want to thank Jeremy Farmer for his past service as well, and it is a big job, you know, and it's a hard choice to have to step down and take care of the obligations, so I certainly appreciate that so we can get the city going again. Thank you. So do I hear a motion to...
Vice Mayor, I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Jeremy Farmer from the Lawrence City Commission.
Second.
So Amick's made the motion. Herbert seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So on to number three, receive information on filling the vacancy and filling the position of mayor.
I'm Tony Wheeler, the city attorney. I did put together a short presentation to try to answer some of the questions that have arisen from the commission's actions today. Before I get started, I wanted to recognize and thank Maria Kaminska Garcia and Randy Larkin, who have been working with me very hard the past few days to make sure that we are prepared for today and can give you sound advice in the days ahead. As you know, under our code, the governing body of the city commission consists of five commissioners. When there is a vacancy on that commission, under our city code, a majority of the remaining commissioners vote to fill that vacancy. The qualifications for a commissioner are also set forth in our code. The commissioner must be a U.S. citizen, at least 18 years old, a qualified elector of the City of Lawrence, and a resident living inside the city limits at the time of appointment and for the duration of their term. The method of selection is not set forth in the code, therefore, you have the discretion to determine that yourself. In 1970, just for historical purposes, we wanted to notify the commission that the last time this happened was in 1970. The remaining commissioners nominated and selected a commissioner to replace Dr. Hughes the day that the resignation was received, and the new member was sworn in three meeting days later. We have provided some information about how other communities address this situation, and that is just for your information or knowledge. There's no particular form that we are recommending. That is really the discretion of this commission to decide how it proceeds, but we thought it might be interesting or of interest to you and the community to see how other communities have handled that. As you know, with Jeremy Farmer's departure, the position of mayor is now in question, and I just wanted to go over some provisions of the code on that. The mayor is a position that is selected by the commission annually. Customarily, that term has been from April to April. Mayor Farmer's term was set to expire in April of 2016. The new mayor, if a new mayor is selected, may complete the existing term, or this commission can set a different term. With the passage of legislation in 2015, House Bill 2104, we do have to make adjustments to the commissioners' terms as a result of that legislation, which I'll discuss here. As you know, these elections that have traditionally been held in April has now been moved to November of even numbered years. And a lot of cities around the state are now dealing with that legislation and trying to make adjustments to their ordinances to comply with that law, and we are planning to do the same as well. We will be bringing that back to the commission in the next few weeks, and we will be making recommendations about how to make our ordinances and terms comply with that new law. So that information will be coming forward. But for now, we just want you to know that you have the ability to establish the term for the mayor at your own discretion. When that is finally selected, we would recommend that that be codified in an ordinance. The mayor is a member of the commission, and the mayor executes formal agreements and runs the meetings. However, they have no administrative duties. The vice mayor is also a position that is selected annually by the commission. When the mayor is absent from a meeting or is unable to perform his duties, then the vice mayor steps in as acting mayor and may preside in the mayor's absence. The vice mayor is acting mayor until a new mayor is selected by the commission. Again, here's a reference to House Bill 2104 that was passed just this last legislative session. Again, it provides that our elections will take place in the fall of odd years, excuse me, I think I said even earlier, it's odd years. The next election will be held on the Tuesday after the first Monday in November 2017. Any commission member whose term was to expire in 2017 will now carry through to the second Monday in January of 2018, when the new elected officials take office. Mr. Farmer's term was set to expire in 2017, so the person who is selected to replace him, their term will run through January of 2018. There is a provision in this recently passed bill, House Bill 2104, that provides for selecting or addressing vacancies. However, as you may know, that bill was a compromise of several pieces of legislation, and it was put together towards the end of the session at the last hour, so it has a number of deficiencies or errors in it. And the league has advised that cities can disregard some of the timeframes in that bill because there are conflicts. It does establish that in House Bill 2104 that vacancies should be filled within 60 days or a special election must be called. However, that applies only to municipalities that have no procedures for filling vacancies, and as you know, our code does have one. So, we think that those timeframes do not apply in this situation, and there are no restrictions on your time for filling this vacancy. Just a few questions that may have arisen now that we have four members. The quorum will remain three, so three of you will need to be in attendance to take formal action on matters. Two of you can still meet, and that would not qualify as a meeting under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. To pass an ordinance, the law requires that three votes are necessary to pass an ordinance, and on all other matters excluding ordinances, if there is a two-to-two vote, that matter will not pass. There are occasions when the governing body has to act by supermajority, and as before, a supermajority will require four positive votes. So just in conclusion, there are some items ahead of you that you need to consider. You will need to establish a process to fill the current vacancy, establish a timeline to fill that vacancy, select a mayor, establish the mayor's term, and select a vice mayor if appropriate. With that, I would stand for any questions. Oh, I want to add one thing. There has been some discussion in the community about having a special election to fill this vacancy, and our office has done some research on that matter. The general rule is that you cannot hold an election unless there is clear statutory authority for that election. And while this House Bill 2104 does have some provisions for calling a special election, because some of those provisions are conflicting with existing statutes, there is a question about the validity of those provisions. And we would not recommend that you call an election under those provisions until that legislation can be corrected or those matters can be finalized. It is, in fact, not appropriate to hold elections if there is no clear statutory authority to do that, and it would have no binding authority. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Comment. Tony, I show my age a little bit, I guess. 1983, we did have another time when a commission member resigned. May have been one of your instructors, Barclay Clark, left the commission, and the commission handled the process itself in that we gave time for application, and then we did interviews and went through the selection process, and, you know, that I would not suggest going to again. But it really needs, whatever the process that we determined, needs to have more of a public process in it, and that would be something that I would support. I mean, I've got a little plan, but...
Was that when Howard Hill came on?
That's when Howard Hill was selected, and there was, you know, a lot of push at that time, and I believe that it was to...we had just had the election, and Don Benz was the fourth place finisher. A lot of push at that time, but not to correct you, just tell you the historical...
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you very much, and I apologize for that.
No, not at all, not at all.
Did you like that process, Mike?
What I would rather do is have a process, and it doesn't need to take longer than 60 days, I mean, to be very honest with you. A process where we were to appoint members of the public to have a checklist, if you will, or a grading system where they would actually make a recommendation back to the governing body, one, two, or three people, or probably two or more to the governing body. I was telling Peter Hancock the other day, I don't want to give anybody a pass since all of us went through the election process and had to come to every forum known, you know, in this room or other rooms, but actually to have people have to respond to public questions and, you know, just go through everything, but having to go through the door-to-door. If you can go door-to-door, I mean, I know the doors that you're going to be coming to, but, I mean, really go through the lights and the cameras and stuff, and actually see how, you know, the folks' ideas and how well that they do, that kind of process, and then have them make a recommendation because I think it gives the public more of a sense of involvement here, and, you know, they can do a grading system, and I think it would work pretty well. But that would be my idea. I mean, obviously, not the perfect plan by any means, as suggested, but anyway, just one idea.
I tend to agree with you. You had discussed that with me earlier, and, you know, this is a way where we can get community involvement where it comes off very bad if the four of us just hold a huddle and break out of that huddle with a name. That can't happen. And as Tony pointed out, the opposite end of that spectrum, having a full public election, also can't happen. So, I would fully support your idea, Commissioner Amick.
Thanks.
But please don't knock on my door.
We can next if you don't listen. Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, public comment on this item?
Again, I have a procedural question. I'm Melinda Henderson. It seems like we have received information on filling the vacancy of the commissioner and filling the position of the mayor, and I'm wondering if we should separate the comment into two different sections since they're actually two different actions, and so there's not any confusion? Would that be something you would want to discuss?
Vice Mayor.
I heard the question. I'm writing it down.
No, 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 no.
I'm Frank Jansen.
Do you want to do that? Do you want to separate the public comment into mayor talk?
Oh, do you want to decide that now? Well, do you want to talk about it after public comment or after each person?
Well, I think that the public wants to discuss these two matters separately.
Well, if that's what we'd like to do, we can do that.
Which one are you going to talk to? We'll start with that.
The one, the first one we talk about, the mayor.
That's where we'll start then.
Well, as I've said before, Mayor Emeritus Amick is almost like the captain of the ship. I would recommend he be appointed to fulfill Jeremy Farmer's position until the next cycle.
Tom, weak. And again, procedurally, is it a matter of picking the replacement, then voting on the mayor? Or are you four going to proceed and choose a mayor ahead of time?
That's an excellent question.
My suggestion is, Vice Mayor, is, and just so everybody understands, I believe that we ought to put the item of mayor on next week's agenda.
On Tuesdays?
Tuesday nights.
Mm-hmm.
That just needs to happen, get out of the way.
Do we need to have a motion to do that?
What I might suggest, Vice Mayor, is perhaps toward the end here of the meeting, we might want to visit about what all you want to have added to the agenda, and if there's any other adjustments to Tuesday night's agenda that you would like to make. For example, it's a pretty lengthy agenda, and I didn't know if you wanted to make any other changes or direct us anymore with regard to your remaining comment here, too. You might want to kind of take up the item of taking comment on the commissioner vacancy, and then we can take your direction at the end on any and all changes to Tuesday night's agenda as a result.
Yeah. It sounds like staff direction is to put the mayor election on a Tuesdays election or meeting.
Tuesday's agenda.
We're still doing public comment, though, on the mayor because we called that, so let's go ahead and finish that, and then we can go back to filling the commissioner vacancy.
Hi, Brian Wyatt. I'm a lifelong resident of Lawrence and actually a business owner also, and I would formally ask this commission to consider going to an election of a mayor, you know, full-time. This form of government has served us well, but with the town growing like it has and with the number of people, I would ask that we look at that in the near future, not this next week or anything. I think we do need to have somebody step up right now with the form of government we have, but really, the citizens of Lawrence deserve to have a full-time mayor. Somebody that, as you all know, you have other jobs that pay your bills. This town has grown large enough that we need somebody full-time in the mayor and go to the election of one, and I would ask that that be a four-year position, just so we give it due diligence and justice to the citizens of Lawrence. Like I said, I was born and raised here. It has grown tremendously, and to expect any of you, let alone a mayor, to do the job that really deserves full-time, it's just unfeasible. I would ask you, at some point in time in the near future, to look to change this form of government to a full-time mayor election. Thank you.
I'm Carol Klinknet, 500 Indiana. I would like to suggest that although the members that are...
Another comment just going to sign in.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, President, North Lawrence Improvement. And it's too bad that we're here this afternoon to deal with this unfortunate incident. But the thing that I would like to say is, there's only one person on this commission that is qualified to get us out of this situation in a manner that has a lot of experience, and that's Mike Amix. He has been on the county commission, the city commission, and probably there's nobody in this room that knows more about Douglas County and the city of Lawrence, Kansas, than Mike Amix. And I think that he should be, he was the mayor prior to Jeremy Farmer. And Jeremy did an excellent job. It was just an unfortunate thing that happened. And so I'm hopeful that Mike can lead us out of this problem that we have today. So thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Good afternoon. I'm Dennis Constance. I live at 817 Tennessee. And I'd like to suggest that in filling the vacancy of mayor, you may not have it statutorily spelled out, but you do have a tradition of how that happens. I would further add that I think the selection of mayor should occur from within the four of you. Because the fifth person who is going to be appointed, regardless of how skilled or talented they are, will not have gone through the election process. So whoever you choose, I think you should choose from among yourselves, and I think you have several good options.
Hi, Brian Wyatt. Again, I just want to clarify that I echo that Mike, with this form of government that we have right now, I also believe that Mike should take over with his experience. I was just talking about it sometime in the future, looking at going to the election of a four-year, a full-time mayor. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
My name is Candace Davis, and I'm the Chair of the Orient Neighborhood Association. And I would also like to echo many of the things that have been said, and I think it would be wise to have someone like Mike step in at this point in time. But it may be that instead of, since this is an unusually long term, it could be that Mike would instead have a reduced term, and then there would be some decision as to who would follow up on that. Another thing, and this is certainly premature, because I don't have, I haven't done enough research on this, but I in particular like the fact that the mayor rotates and that all of you are given a chance. Because actually, the mayor does make appointments to many of the governing bodies in the city, and that is a reflection of many different perspectives. And I happen to like that. And let's see, another thing, what was I thinking? I think that was it. Oh, obviously, and so I don't want to, this is probably very obvious, but I think whoever is the replacement needs to be someone who's really skilled in city government, has a background in history, perhaps was a former city commissioner, but certainly has experience on the planning commission and understands this complicated process. Because this, it takes a lot to get up to speed on this. And I definitely don't think that person should become mayor, basically, for these other reasons that were mentioned about not having been elected at this time. But, so I hope you will get someone who's very skilled and wise. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
It's Carol Klinknet again. I want to put a word into, it's my understanding, if the mayor resigns, the, what is the title?
Vice Mayor.
The vice mayor becomes the mayor. So it's my under...
Becomes what? The acting mayor.
Which she is. Okay, never mind, cancel my input.
Yeah, the vice mayor becomes acting mayor when the mayor is not able to fulfill their duties, and then a new mayor is selected.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Any other public comment on mayor selection?
Good afternoon, Acting Mayor, Commissioners, Staff. I'm Melinda Henderson, and I have some comments from Marcy Francisco, who was planning to be here today and was unable to make it due to a conflict she had with her duties as a state senator in Topeka. So she emailed Diane the text, and I believe you all got a copy of it, but we weren't sure that you all would have enough time before the meeting to read it. So she asked me to read this into the public record, and then my comments are along the same issue. So my comments will follow reading her email into record. So Marcy says, "I understand the commission will be meeting to discuss the calendar and procedures regarding selection of a mayor and new commissioner. I appreciate all commissioner members due to respond to difficult and unanticipated situations in our community. I would appreciate consistency and continuity as much as possible in your response. I served on the Lawrence City Commission in 1979 and 1980, when the commission was still following the informal policy to have the top vote-getter in each election serve as mayor during the third year in office, during their third year in office, and the next highest vote-getter serve as mayor in their fourth year in office. I was impressed by the strengths provided by this pattern. Each mayor had the opportunity to have seen close-up two other mayors in that same role. An individual who was in a four-year term could look forward to the opportunity of serving as mayor in one of the final two years of their term. I regret that internal disagreements in the commission and the difficulty of getting back to it have prevented this pattern from being used since 1981." And I don't actually have the historical data on that. I know when Mike Rundle was on the commission later, they didn't follow that procedure either. So it's been quite a while that we haven't been giving the individual at least two years to get up to speed before becoming mayor. So back to Marcy. I would hope that in your decision, you consider the advantages of experience and might also consider steps that would allow us to, again, follow a pattern that allows commissioners to look forward to the future and experienced commissioners to be serving as mayors. That's the end of Marcy's comment. Excuse me, I'm at the tail end of a bug, so I need some water. Okay. So I totally agree with Marcy's reasoning, and I really appreciate her unique perspective, especially during the time that she served on the commission and as mayor. In all the time I've been here, I've always thought it was at least odd, if not really appropriate, for a new commissioner to automatically become vice mayor. Because what if something happened to the mayor? Well, a new commissioner with no commission experience could end up being the mayor. And I don't think that's a very good plan to follow. New commissioners need mentoring, and the learning curve can be steep going in, especially with having to immediately deal with the budget in your first year. I think it was Commissioner Herbert who said, "This is a very vulnerable time." And that's a good adjective, I think. I don't think anybody ever foresaw this situation arising. So if we could really think hard about, and have a really good public discussion about this, about going back to the previous way the mayor was chosen, the two highest vote-getters would still have the opportunity to, you know, become mayor after they've had time on the commission, learned the ropes, paid their dues, developed appropriate leadership skills. All of that takes time. And the good news about HB 2104, if there is any, is that we have that time right now. We have an extra nine months. We might even be able to fit all three commissioners in at some point. But I've been following city commission and attending meetings since at least the year 2000. And, you know, I dare say it's possible that I've attended more meetings in those 15 years than any of the new commissioners. Don't know about you, Stuart. But I can guarantee you that Commissioner Amix has probably been sitting up there on the dais for the majority of those meetings. And I'm very grateful to see you up there today. And I certainly appreciate your knowledge and skills and experience and abilities and that you've been on this commission to help guide it through some of the tough times. And I hope that you would consider stepping up once again, hopefully for two years, to guide us through into the future, because we do have a lot of important, critical decisions to make. And I just appreciate all of the skills that you bring to the table. And I want to make sure that the new commissioners understand that I do not mean any disrespect to any of you. I want you all to have the opportunity to learn and be mentored from the master. And, well, I think Ted said it first. So you're there, and you have the ability. And, you know, I just, I hope the community really understands what an opportunity we have here, too. So thank you all. I wish you all the best, good luck. I know you've got a tough road ahead. I have been very pleased with the direction you all have been trying to move, so hopefully that will continue. Thank you, staff, for all the time you have put in, and Tony especially. Thank you for all of your guidance. I know it's probably been really interesting for you the last few days. So thank you very much for everything that you've done. And I, too, want to say thank you to Jeremy for all the time and effort he did put in to being a city commissioner. And I'm very sad that he's not able to continue. I truly believe he had some great ideas and was able to implement a few, and I hope we all remember that in the future. So thank you very much for the time to speak. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Melinda.
Any other public comment regarding the mayor?
Dan, Danenburg 2702, University Drive. I don't think anybody sitting up there should be the next mayor. I think we need to have a recently retired or senior-status federal district judge over the next 60 days take applications and hold public interviews to select the next mayor. That way, we will have a certain degree of independence, and hopefully, we will have somebody with the skill set to do the job and who is not connected with developers or landlords or any of those special interest groups, which are, for all practical purposes, have been running the city. We have the Fritzl Farmer Fund and Frolic Facility out there, but we can't get a new police facility. So this is a failed enterprise. And I echo the gentleman's comments earlier that we need a new form of government, because this isn't working. We can't do this with part-time people. We have a complex city that is growing, and we need a full-time administrator, somebody who can really govern the city, and so I don't have to constantly send in reports about code enforcement or getting the trash picked up or something like that. So we can have a modern, functioning city. And the only other comment I would make is that this federal district judge retiree or senior-status would have 60 days in which to come up with a name. And I think that person then would fill out the regular, the remaining term of Mr. Farmer. And by the way, you won't see me singing the praises of Mr. Farmer, because he called me an asinine conspiracy theorist, which I proudly bear that title, since he uses it. And he also sat up there, and sometimes when I would have difficulty speaking, he would mock me. And I never appreciated that. So I think we need somebody other than this table, from this group, to come forward and serve out as mayor, and somebody who is qualified and chosen by an independent entity. We don't have good local elections in this town. Hardly anybody shows up. I've been a poll worker, and, you know, it's hard. I bring my sleeping bag, because I know there are going to be times when, you know, there's just nobody showing up. So I think we need to consider that method, and plus the fact it would be expeditious. I'm sure the former mayor, maybe like other former mayors, he will wash up on the shores of the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. That seems to be where former mayors land. So I think we need to find that independent method of getting a new mayor appointed, and then we can go forward. I want to reiterate what that man said. We need to go forward with finding a new form of government as soon as possible, because this is not a succeeding enterprise.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other public comment about the mayor position?
Repeat performances seem to be the order of the day here. I would just like to suggest that, with all due respect to things that have been said by the public here and by yourselves, it may be a good idea to revisit some of the procedures of how we organize city government. But in the middle of what amounts to a crisis of leadership is not the time to do that. So I would like to suggest...
I bring my sleeping bag because I know there are going to be times when, you know, there's nobody showing up. So I think we need to consider that method and plus the fact it would be expeditious. I'm sure the former mayor, maybe like other former mayors, he will wash up on the shores of the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. That seems to be where former mayors land. So I think we need to find that independent method of getting a new mayor appointed and then we can go forward. I want to reiterate what that man said. We need to go forward with finding a new form of government as soon as possible because this is not a succeeding enterprise.
Any other public comment about the mayor position?
Repeat performances seem to be the order of the day here. I would just like to suggest that with all due respect to things that have been said by the public here and by yourselves, it may be a good idea to revisit some of the procedures of how we organize city government. But in the middle of what amounts to a crisis of leadership is not the time to do that. So I would like to suggest that we don't try and reinvent the wheel at this point. Get things settled down, get the vacancy filled, and then look at some of the suggestions that have been made. And Commissioner Amick's idea, I think, is a pretty good one.
I should say commissioner, I'm sorry. I should have said commissioner, I'm sorry.
Any other public comment about the mayor? So we'll bring it back to the commission?
I'll put it on Tuesday night. It's put on Tuesday night.
So we'll be putting it on Tuesday night?
And I, I just want to say a special thank you for everyone who said nice things about me. Master, I don't know, that one, that one kind of, that one caught me off guard.
We're changing, we're actually changing your name tag. It'll, it'll just read Master.
I, I do want everybody to know that I, I did visit with my wife this morning and that if, if the commission saw reason to, to ask and, and ask me to do the job, I would be very proud to do the job. I want everybody to know that. Thank you all.
Shall we move on to public comment about filling the vacancy? Okay. Is there any public comment about filling the vacancy?
Tom Peters, 1706 West Second. I was a little unclear about the procedure of selecting the people that you would then choose from. It sounded to me like you wanted to pick them, but no guideline was set. And since a person that wants to run for the commission can just sign up, you know, anybody can do it, I'd like to suggest that the public has a chance to somehow present themselves to whatever group is then going to choose so that everybody has a chance to do it.
You know, and since I just brought this idea up a little bit ago and I was telling Matthew about before we met, my suggestion would be quite honestly is have each member of the governing body select three or four names and, and, you know, come to agreement on how big this group may be, that we do the scoring. Is that what you were asking about?
Well, I know that to allow anybody in the community-
Sure.
-who is a little extreme maybe, but I think that's fair as long as they satisfy the legality, so.
Sure, okay. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Since I jumped the gun earlier, I'm just going to make sure that my recommendation goes on the right portion of the agenda for public record. I won't go through the rest of it, but again, recommendation is the city commission develops an ad hoc committee that develops the method, just the method for recommendation, no names from that ad hoc committee. I would recommend giving the committee 10 to 14 days to develop the method and then submit it to the committee for consideration. And then after that, you all would then choose whether or not to use that method and move forward or pick one of the ones that, you know, there's lots of methods that the city attorney gave, so just want to make sure it was on the right portion of record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Any other public comment?
My name is Joe Harkins. I live on 1713 Truen Avenue, or Tru Lane. I'd, I'd like to make a couple of comments about comments that have been made and all made in good faith. One about the form of government. This is certainly not the time to bring that up, recruiting a new city manager. You can't do that with a job description that's a blank piece of paper. If you want to do that down the road, you need to set some timeline for it that, but not make that a factor in the process of recruiting a new city manager. I can't think of a better way to disrupt that process than to start that discussion at this time. Now, in terms of selecting the next commissioner, sometimes technique can triumph over the purpose. And in this case, with an election having occurred so recently, that produced three new members of the commission, actually. That's, that represented the public's sentiment and that sentiment is still fresh and the results of that election are still available. So rather than go to the extraordinary expense of jumping, creating a new process in lieu of an election, I would strongly recommend that you go back and look at the results of the recent election and simply take the next person standing and see if they want to serve the remainder of this term that's available. Thank you.
I'm Frank Jansen. I'd like to have Master Amick, if you could, describe more, in more detail, your idea. Each of you will select two or three people to be on the committee and then from that point, anybody in town can apply to that position. Can you describe that more?
Sure. Basically what it is, is that the mayor of the commission would appoint approximately 15 people that would act as the group that would grade or score, if you will, people who wish to go through the process of being seated as the next, to fill the unexpired term. What would happen is, is we would set up essentially three forums, you know, to be held in this room, obviously televised, so the public would have, you know, access to be able to see who that next official is going to be appointed official in this particular case. But to actually have them go through the similar process of what we went through. They have to answer questions, you know, obviously that they can bring from the public. We could use Voter Education Coalition, the League, obviously a number, there's groups here in town that, that do this regularly and do it, you know, and do it very well. And then to have them meet and confer and make recommendations to the governing body, whether one, two, or three people that we should interview. And then we ultimately make the selection who that appointed person is going to be. And that's in a nutshell. You give, I don't know, 14-day period for people to apply for the position or people to come forward and, and start that process. So that's basically it. It's pretty simple. But it is a way that the public does get involved by being able to make that recommendation to governing bodies, so. I mean, think about it, it's not a bad deal.
You're the master.
No.
Any other public comment?
Tim Bateman from 6212 Berando Court. Person I think two before me had the way I would probably choose to do it, that would be is take the recent election results. Those people had an interest in running. They had public support to at least get through the primary into the general election. So I would just take and go four, ask the person to finish fourth. If he didn't want to do it, then fifth, sixth, and so on. But I think that is a very fair way. Those people have expressed interest. They've gone through the gauntlet like you've talked about. They've gone to the meetings or the debates. They've gone door-to-door. I think the interest is a big part of it. And coincidentally, the person who was number four also has experience, which I think would help, too. I think the way to do it is just to go through and go four, five, and six from what the previous election was because that's not that far removed from where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
That idea would work and in fact, those same people who did come in, fourth, fifth, and sixth, whatever, we don't know if they have gone on to other occupations, which may be true, but in any sense, they can still apply. And that would be a leg up on the competition in this election.
Any other public comment? Should we bring it back to the commission?
Vice Mayor, I just want to say, mine's just one idea. And, and, you know, the commission will have the opportunity to, if, if they want to go to the fourth place vote getter, I mean, I, I mean, those are all possibilities, but I think that we have to have that discussion, you know, as, as a commission on whatever the process we're going to choose. Mine's one idea and, and it's one that I, I want to make sure that the public is involved in, in going through this and, and doing that and making, making recommendations. So that's the best way that I thought that we'd be able to meet that. The deal is, is the timeline as to when we want to consider that, I would think. And looking at Tuesday night's agenda.
It's, it's a beast.
Is there something we can bump?
Like the agenda?
I'd like, I'd like to move on this.
Well, item number six is the Lawrence Memorial Hospital sponsorship. I mean, is that a possibility that that could be moved for a week or is that, is that an absolute that has to be taken up this week? I think it, it pretty much has to, we have to move.
I think there was some desire from LMH to go ahead and have that on there. So we've kind of thought a little bit about some of these.
Well, Castle Drive's not going anywhere.
Yeah, we, we could-
Move that one.
We can reschedule that.
Castle Drive hadn't gone anywhere for a long time.
We can put it off a week or two. That would be my suggestion.
I would suggest setting off the East Orange because it's been three years. And I don't believe they have an operator yet from what I hear, so.
Is there a timing, is there a timing timeline that we have to follow there to be anything coming from the Planning Commission?
Does the applicant's desire be heard?
Yeah, I think when I spoke to him, there was some concern about that one getting bumped due to the fact that they don't have an operator because it hasn't been given approval yet. It's kind of a chicken and egg scenario.
I might suggest there's no applicant surrounding items three and four, the East Orange, so we need to-
RS5 and North Lawrence. But, but I know the impact of that as well, so.
No, thanks.
We're happy to present that Tuesday anyway.
I think we probably ought to leave RS5 on there.
Cultural plan?
They're coming from out of town.
They are, I do, I do know that they consults when they travel.
Well, I mean, we could-
Bring, bring your sleeping bag.
Yeah, we could just have a, we got away with a short one the other time, so maybe we're due.
I've got nowhere to be.
My only plan for Wednesday was to come yell at you through your window, so.
Would you like to make the mayor's selection first on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That'd be good. So do you want to add then the discussion of, you want to add the discussion of the repl- or to fill the unexpired term is the very last item? Or do you want to move it up somewhere? Let's put that right after the mayor. Okay. Let's, let's do those up front. If we run out of time, then we won't be missing none.
I think it would be good if each of us came with an idea of a timeline and a method of selecting candidates and then each had our idea. Hang out one between all of us. And just have an idea.
Okay, go. Set up, yeah?
Very good. Well, we'll add the mayor election as the first item, the discussion of the city commission vacancy, and then defer the current item five, the Castle Drive improvements to a future meeting.
Any other commissioner comment? Any other actions that were expected to take from this agenda that we haven't done yet?
No.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Amick says move to adjourn. Herbert seconds. All as a favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you for coming, everyone.